Okay. It is 1:00 PM and we'll go ahead and get started. This is a work session with the Board of County Commissioners. And we're here today for an update from public health first, and then we'll move into some information on the eviction process as we know going forward from the mayor. So, thank you for joining us today, Mayor. We appreciate it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Colleen to give us an update and then answer or take a few questions. And then we'll go into the information that the mayor is here to present. So, Colleen, you can take it away.
Great, thank you guys so much. So, as of yesterday, we are up to 79 positive cases. We are currently monitoring 10 cases, meaning that they have active infection. We've been continuing to reach out to contacts, make sure that anyone who is non-symptomatic is and/or is a close contact of a positive case is being talked to, quarantined if appropriate and/or isolated if they have symptoms and/or tested as needed. So, testing capacity continues to be in a great spot. We still have tests available at both Rocky Mountain Fire Practice and St. Vincent Hospital. We do have, we got a resupply last week of testing supplies. So, like I said, that puts us in a good position to continue to encourage folks that are sick to get tested. And then we are now making recommendations for folks that have been exposed to a positive case. The recommendation now is for to wait seven days. And if they do have symptoms, they should get tested right away. But if they hit 10 days and they still don't have symptoms, they still should get tested. This is a rule out, if you will, that they're asymptomatic. I think some of the other big pieces that we're working on is the fact that we are trying to generate a mitigation plan that actually has, you know, that's data-driven with metrics so that we can recognize as a community kind of where we're at, where we're comfortable, where we're not comfortable, if you will, what triggers, or we may or may not have thresholds, especially as we are, you know, working closely with the school district and trying to, you know, answer any questions they might have and be available to a system as they make their decision about how they can move school forward at this point in time. Those are some of the big things. We do not have a town hall meeting this week, but we do have one scheduled for next week. And our intent is to have that metrics plan at least introduced by that point so that we can have something to kind of start out with the communities so that folks can really understand where we're at and why we're at where we're at. I think that's, you know, a big piece. Like I said, there's a lot of moving pieces on that document. We've already started it. And once we have that, we'll push that to, we'll push that to all our stickles, make sure like, hey, did we miss anything? And try to get feedback and input to make it truly a county, you know, city-wide plan that everyone feels comfortable with. I think at this point in time, we have been in touch with the state about our variances because our variance request was put in place prior to the last, you know, public health orders that have come out and the safer-at-home. We feel confident along with the state that we do not have to have a variance at this point in time because of local, or excuse me, the state public health orders actually cover everything that we had asked for in our variance. At the time, we weren't sure what was going to come out from the state. And we wanted to make sure that we had our community's interest, best interest at heart. And so therefore, we had submitted prior to that order coming out. At this point in time, like I said, the state is comfortable that, that we do not need that variance. They're trying to clean up, if you will, at the state level of who really needs a variance, who doesn't. But at this point in time, you know, the governor's public health orders as well as our own public health order kind of stance. So, we do not have variances as of yesterday. They've taken it, we're down off the site already. So, that's not a negative thing. It's a positive thing that we've been doing well enough and the orders cover what we're asking for. And we feel comfortable about where we're at. That is all I have right now. I'll take any questions.
Hi, Colleen, it's Sarah. Thank you very much for the update. I am wondering if you can share out any draft or outline that you might have thus far with the mitigation plan so that we can kind of shoot thoughts and items that were, feedback that we're getting from the community with you as well pertinent to kind of how you're currently on.
Yes, absolutely. So, basically, we're trying to put some numbers to it right now. Our hope is to get more done in the next two days. And then we'll kick it out at that point. Like, it doesn't make sense to give you something that's not like yet a plug-and-play kind of document. And so, we will definitely do that before this weekend. We'll send that out and then go from there. And then obviously, we would ask folks, you know, to make comments versus like edits in the, in the end. And recognize that we won't have all the language in yet because basically, we're just trying to formulate the actual like numbers and our triggers and our thresholds and which way we'd move, you know, whether if we go forward, if we go backwards kind of thing. And then we'll put in like, you know, all the, all the correct lingo of how to introduce it and all those other pieces. So, it'll still be a little rough this week, but definitely able to share out.
Thank you. Colleen, just a quick clarification on the variance. The variance we had and now we no longer have it, correct? It does not make us more restrictive than the state?
It does not. It's alignment with what the state is doing right now.
Thank you. So, at this time, we'll open it up. Does anybody have any questions for Colleen in regards to our response to the COVID-19 pandemic? Mayor Labe, do you have any, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's great that the state has gotten to the point where we don't need the variance. But could, Colleen, could you share with us what the parameters are right now?
In what sense, Greg?
Well, number, number of people in the gathering, distancing, masks, all those various parts of, of.
Absolutely. So, none of those things have gone away. We continue to encourage the physical testing, saying face coverings is still mandatory in public places if you cannot maintain six feet distance. We continue to encourage, you know, hand hygiene. It's, it's not a public health order, but it's, you know, a request, if you will. We do put it in there. It is in there, saying that we know that these are, you know, the big things we want. We ask folks not to gather. And apparently, the only discrepancy, if you will, that we have is as a special events process, the county and the agencies that support the special event process have decided that we will not entertain any events greater than 50. And that includes participants and, you know, staffing volunteers, participants, that thing. Because we are recognizing that where we are seeing our cases is when people gather and they get together. And, you know, of course, not having symptoms and just, you know, passing it along. And then one person passes it before they know they have symptoms. And, you know, it's just kind of a chain reaction. Instead, we really want to avoid what they would call like super-spreader events. It's not necessarily that one person has the ability to spread it to 50 people. It's when that one person gives it to the one person and then gives it to somebody else. And we know, as you know, it is in our community. And I think as far as like our variance piece, it's, it's kind of like the state is caught up to where we are at. It's not like we recognize what we need in our community and then the state is finally there recognizing that that's what's needed kind of across the state. So, I feel pretty good about that and where we're at. But I think that would probably be the only discrepancy, if you will. We've had conversations around if I needed to amend my public health order to make our public health order more strict. But because events have to come through the county special event process, then that is kind of where we feel confident that that information is out there about groups of 50.
Thank you. The governors, what is, then, we have limited to groups of 50 in the county. But I thought that the state was something greater than that. What, what is their number?
Yep, so the state says up to 175. If you have the ability to have, you know, six feet social distancing and some other parameters in place. The reality is that when you put 175 people together and you do kind of, they have a social distancing calculator, you know, the reality is that people are not going to just stay in one spot in their space. And so, I think that's what we're recognizing with some of the things. You know, you can do your best at the same time, try to bring in groups larger than 50. It just doesn't feel manageable to a lot of the supporting agencies. And 175 in outside spaces.
Thanks, Colleen. Thanks, Greg. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay. All right, so seeing none, we'll move on to our next item of discussion, which is a discussion with Mayor Labe around evictions. So, Greg, I'm going to hand it over to you and you can take it away.
Thank you. I, I was, I was on a webinar today and it just scared the bejesus out of me. I mean, I don't know how else to put it. They, this webinar was expressing the strong probability that the entire United States is, is on the edge of an eviction cliff, if you will, because a lot of people, we're now into the fifth month of people being out of work. And in some communities, people are literally five months behind on their rent, but they have not, but the eviction process has had a moratorium, certainly in the state of Colorado. So, when that lifts, if there's nothing else in place and people are that far behind, then they're kind of doomed to being evicted and being homeless. So, and I don't, I, it's hard for me to know exactly what that's going to mean in our community. And having talked with Noah briefly, he's not terribly sure. I think we've overall done a good job with our Unmet Needs Committee, who, who has been able to help a variety of different demographics in our, in our population. But they've been able to help people who qualify for TANF and, and other, other relief efforts. But they've also been able to help with people who did not qualify. And I think that's been a big deal as well. But we're, we just don't have unlimited money. And I think we're, we're kind of down to the tail end of, of our capability. I don't know if you remember, the first month that we did this, it was like $79,000 total, not, not just from the community fund, but also from Build the Generation Full Circle, different agencies having access to different funding. But it's not going away. And, and it looks like it could get worse in terms of people being out of work, regardless of, and you guys have, you know, a pretty good idea how I feel about, about how far we've gone, you know, in our society in terms of shutting everything down. But nonetheless, it doesn't matter. That's all academic because now we have this serious problem on our hands. So, in the seminar, they talked about a lot of different things. And one of the things they talked about is, now, what are you going to do about it? Number one is you probably don't have enough money in your community to solve this problem. Now, fortunately, we do have some money and I just don't know whether or not we should bring it to bear on eviction issues or not. And that's, that's a conversation we may need to have, but that's not, not really what I'm trying to present today. What I, what they did say is they think that there needs to be a substantial stimulus package from the federal government and that we should be pressing for that through our, our senators and representatives that, that targets evictions and therefore homelessness. We could be talking about families who, who have never been homeless before and all of a sudden, they're out of work and now they're out of their home. How do we even deal with that? I mean, we certainly don't have, we don't even have, you know, homeless shelters here in Lake County, not to speak of, you know, except for a few churches that will help individuals from time to time. We have no ability to deal with homelessness. What we may have the ability to do is deal with helping people get through this, this time. So, this, this, this webinar had some ideas. And I'll just kind of throw them out there. They said you really need a new eviction process. The eviction process as it stands doesn't account for income or, you know, COVID-19 risk factors or what industry they're in or even what neighborhood they live in. It just, it doesn't care. It's, it's statute. And so, they have to follow that statute. And the judge really doesn't have a lot of leeway. So, what their suggestion is suggesting is maybe we should have an eviction clearinghouse. And that would be a cooperative effort between the courts, in that case, probably Judge Seamus, the city, the county, the nonprofits, the sheriff's office, because they're the ones, you know, the sheriff's officer end up having to be the ones who do the set outs in the eviction process. And, and pulling all these kind of, these people together and coming up with a plan that might allow us to get into settlement agreements with landlords. And one of the things that was brought up in this webinar is the landlords really haven't done anything wrong. And sometimes they have the pressure of mortgage on their building. It's not going away. They're not getting the money, but they still have to pay their mortgage. And so, we could have it, the double whammy of people being evicted and landlords simultaneously being foreclosed on. And that's not good for anybody. So, they did talk about, you know, how we might enter into settlements with landlords. And they suggested about a 60% settlement because if someone's like to say four months behind and you can give a landlord 60% of, of those four months, it's going to be tons better than 0%. But they also said it's not good enough to just pay back rent. You also have to enter into settlement with that landlord that guarantees, let's say, the next four months at the same percentage, 60%. So, maybe, so you might be giving the landlord 60% of eight months' rent as part of the settlement. You keep someone in the, you keep a family in their home or in their trailer home or whatever we're talking about. But it is going to cost some money and it's going to require negotiation with landlords. If they're in transient, then there's probably nothing you can do. Then maybe we should, we need to be thinking of alternative housing for people, if such a thing even exists. But this thing, they talked about, they talked in terms of avoiding a tragedy. This is a tragedy that we, that's looming, that, that is probably maybe one of the most significant things in our lifetime in terms of, of the homeless pressures on society. So, I was very impressed by the webinar. And it, it, you know, led me to the conclusion that we, we may need to really be pretty proactive here in the next month to try and figure out how we're going to help deal with this in the short term and the long term. So, I guess number one is we need to pressure our senators and legislators in terms of, this webinar suggested probably needs about $150 billion nationwide to cities and counties specifically for rental assistance. And then it also talked about, you know, being proactive in our community and putting together a coalition that can, that could possibly deal with this and deal with landlords. They also said, I'll leave, leave one more thing. They said, you don't want to be, what he said is, you don't want to try to be fair in your distribution of these funds. He said, that's, a lot of cities make that mistake. They put it out for a random lottery or it's a first-come, first-served basis. It's a terrible idea. You have to target the populations that need this assistance. And he said, you target them by the neighborhood, you know, they're, you know, cost-burden neighborhoods. And we know we have those in our county. You have to target by income. You have to target by industries. Maybe you target, you know, people who work for bars or restaurants as, as a particularly vulnerable populations. And then you also have to target by COVID-19 risk factors. You know, people older than 65, underlying health conditions. So, you have to be very deliberate in how you, you use the money that you have. Any questions on this from anybody?
Greg, this is Sarah Mudge. I don't have a question. I appreciate you bringing that up, though, and I agree. I think, you know, a while back, we could project some of these challenges with the remaining numbers of unemployed folks that are in the community. I suggest, though, and Janine wasn't able to join the call. She's on another meeting. But I think that, like you're saying, and I appreciate that, being pretty deliberate about how we monitor or assess who, where the needs are and then how those are met. I feel like we can maybe provide support and enhance the work of the Unmet Needs Committee and really get some concrete numbers, maybe on those outlying neighborhoods, the trailer parks from management properties to see, you know, just how, what the numbers are and who's, what the percentage of renters are that are kind of remain behind and how far behind and all the details that you started to outline there. So, I think, I think that we should certainly kind of shift the focus or increase that focus from those groups. And part of the recovery committees could possibly help there.
Right, the Unmet Needs Committee is, is primary to what we're trying to accomplish or have been. And I think that as a community, it feels like we've done a pretty good job of helping people not get so far behind in rents. And, but I don't know what those percentages might be like. I don't know how many people, we've reached a lot of people. You know, who have we not reached? Who's behind on rent? I, I don't know how to get up those numbers. I really don't. But we may have to have those people come to us and say, I'm three months behind. I'm going to be evicted because the moratorium is running out. That's part of the problem here. And now, what can I do? And so, then we maybe help by going into a negotiation with that landlord, agreeing to a settlement amount that is not only the past, but the future to assure that we're not paying the landlord and then he's still evicts them. I don't know of any other way to get at it other than, than set up a system and let people come to us.
Is this something that we could use CARES funding to, to replenish the Unmet Needs Committee then?
I think we.
That was one of my thoughts. Sorry to interrupt, Sarah. That was my thought, however. I think that's the short-term solution. I think, as he pointed out, we're really going to have to lobby for, for federal funding for city and county of specifically for rental issues and homelessness.
I, yeah, and, and not just to make those payments, but to have, you know, probably increased case management or staff support on the administrative side of how we work through the criteria to, or eligibility to, to receive any funding that we might allocate further to the Unmet Needs Committee. I also think that, you know, this is kind of one of those things that highlights too, all those underlying utility costs that in some of these neighborhoods really aren't that well restricted, I guess I will say. You know, water, water is one of those that I've kind of looked at a lot and have gathered information and experiences from partners in the basin to address any potential on getting a more secure water, better water quality delivered to trailer home parks. And so, I think if we keep that in mind as well as we approach that and as we work through all these other things, it's, it's that, it's the, all those issues that are woven together to manage high costs of some, some of these particular neighborhoods. But I think, I think, I think we start with, with reaching out to management, property managers and seeing how we can get some concrete numbers and a great understanding if we don't already have that through the Unmet Needs Committee and Human Services.
Yeah, the trailer parks are one thing. I mean, that, that, they're consolidated management. In town, I don't know how we get at the various landlords, whether, you know, for not only, you know, smaller, like the lily bee, but also individual renters. Again, that's, that's where they're, the renters are almost going to have to come to us.
Yeah, I think you're right. I mean, I think. Yeah, I think the best we can do is, is reach out to management companies who are, who are, who have their arms around larger groups of homes or properties, communicate to employers that this is a resource and put it out into the community. But I think you're right. We'll, we'll have to, we can do our best that way and hit as many folks as we can. And individuals like that will have to come, come find us.
I too wish that Janine was on this call because she can speak to those numbers probably better than any of us. But something that I think if we roll out a program to help with the aid of our community, we need to keep in mind fair housing practices as well so we don't inadvertently breach any of those laws.
Chris made a good comment in the chat about Colorado Legal Services may be able to help identify people in need of assistance since they routinely represent indigent people with landlord issues, including eviction. Chris, is there a way that we get ahold of them to, to like ask for some data? Or what, what would that process look like?
Yeah, I, I'll be happy to reach out. Or Alex Mar, she works with our firm, does a lot of work with Colorado Legal Services, takes on cases for them. So, we can definitely reach out to see if they're getting many requests for assistance with folks who live in Lake County. The other thing I was going to mention too is that, you know, I absolutely recommend that before y'all start putting it out in the community, hey, contact us if you're having these issues, we need to put the program together. And I think it's smart to, as you said, reach out to property managers and such, you know, to get the perspective from both sides. So, it, it doesn't look like that the county and the city are getting together to work adverse to the property owners. Because as Greg said, you know, a lot of times the property owners are in almost the same dire situation with pending foreclosures based on the fact that they don't have the resources to pay their mortgages because their tenants aren't paying rent. And some of these folks may very well be in a situation where they've been laid off from work, so they're not working and just happen to have this, this rental property that, that they use to supplement their income. So, you know, I'd be happy to, to work with, you know, with folks on trying to put together a program. I do know that right now, it was, I think this morning announced that the governor has extended essentially a moratorium on evictions, you know, through, I think, September 9th or something to that effect. So, there's a little bit more time. And I know for certain that the courts aren't really taking those cases on right now because they, they don't have the resources to, to really effectively allow them to be prosecuted during the shutdown and limited trials that are being had. So, I think there's definitely a, an environment that'll support putting together a community program. And I applaud you for wanting to look at being proactive about that because I agree with Mayor Labe that, that this is going to be a huge impact all the way across the country. And whether or not the federal government will be able to step in and help and how much, if they do help, how much of that will trickle down to Lake County. I think we might be better served to put together the community's own type of program to help address these issues in advance. So, I'm, I'm happy to try to help. And we can definitely reach out to Colorado Legal Services to see, you know, what if any way they maybe have to support such a program. You know, if people are calling them saying, hey, I got this eviction notice from my landlord. What do I do? I'm not working and so forth. Maybe they can help refer them back to us for, you know, to connect them with the right resources whenever the program is set up.
So, I texted Janine and she, she said that the prediction for, for Colorado is 33% of renters will be evicted. And she said that that might be a bit high for Lake County, but to expect, expect somewhere in that margin for evictions for us. And that there have been some landlords and tenants in kind of a, I don't want to use the word threatening, but stressful situation of trying to enforce getting rent paid and, and that tenant not having the income to pay that rent. And so, I think it's definitely something that's worthwhile for us to hit head-on before the wintertime comes, especially not knowing what's going to happen with, with the tourism industry and how that's going to pick up in the wintertime or if it's going to pick up in the wintertime. And Colleen, maybe you have kind of a pulse on that? Do you have any inclination from the state of what those surrounding counties are doing when it comes to their ski areas or anything like that at this point? when it comes to their ski areas or anything like that at this point?
I, I'm calling me a stepped off. I, I don't know, but that's a great question. Also, I'd like to go back to, to Lori's point, and I think it's a very important point. In terms of targeting specific populations, but you have to be very careful. You can't, you can't, you know, target the Latinx community. That, that would be against the law. You know, in, in all the protected groups, it's, it's like this two-way street. We always, we always think, well, that's, that's, you can't discriminate against them. But in this case, we wouldn't be allowed to discriminate for them. So pretty critical understanding.
And that's, that's why I think it's important to have representation from both constituencies for, you know, from the tenants and the landlords. In, you know, to make it so that they understand this is a program that is intended to assist both sides of this equation and figure out a solution. It's not, it's not a tenants' rights program, if you will. So that way you can kind of avoid or at least help mitigate some of the backlash that you may get if it appears that you're trying to help tenants avoid obligations or reduce their obligations to their landlords.
Well, of course, that would be our hope is that we reduce their obligations. That's part of the negotiating process, so.
Yeah, and, and like you said, but it can't be a set thing because it, it will depend. It, it's something that will depend on the, the, you know, circumstances of both parties. And one thing I will suggest is when I was in Virginia, I ran a, a program for the local district court, which is the lowest level court in Virginia. It's not a court of record, but it handles a lot of landlord tenant stuff. And the program that we used was actually to mediate landlord tenant matters. And therefore it helps facilitate the parties reaching a resolution instead of having someone essentially dictate what that resolution may be. So that might be something to consider as well.
Okay, so Colleen says in the chat that we have not heard any plans on ski resorts. CalFO is going to set up a meeting with public health in counties with ski resorts. We have also asked for a CDPA sheet to provide the guidance on ski resorts. Okay, so that's good to know. Thanks, Colleen. Definitely good information to have there. What's our, what's our next steps? Just putting together that program and that criteria then, Chris?
Yeah, you know, I'd, I'd be interested to hear more from Mayor Lobby. And I don't know if they shared a copy of any materials or something from the webinar you attended today as to what, you know, proposed are, if there are any type of programs that have been or are being developed that we may be able to look at as well. But essentially, I think the, the community needs to decide, and when I say community, I mean, you know, the city and the county need to decide if they're going to support such a program, what you want it to look like, you know, what the parameters can be and what resources the local governments have to, to put towards supporting that type of program. And then we might be able to get, you know, Continental Divide Bar Association is the, the local bar association that covers Lake County. And we might be able to get some participation from attorneys involved with that group who also do mediations and such. You might be able to help facilitate that type of program. As well as, like I said, Colorado Legal Services. Of course, Colorado Legal Services is always operating on a shoestring. And I can imagine during this pandemic, they're even more stretched in terms of available resources that they have. But, you know, it wouldn't hurt to ask.
I would say in the short term, what I'd like to see happen is for the city and the county and the courts, then that would be, I think, almost all evictions in the county go through Judge Seamus. That's not a city issue. And then build a generation, full circle, just pull together a meeting. And I mean, in the next week and really sit down and talk through this. And then maybe invite landlords to come have this conversation with us. And I don't, I don't know if we can get anybody to show up. You know, it's hard to know. But I think first step is for us to put together our collaboration and, and get buy-in from, from the county court. Because that's going to be an important piece of, of making, you know, the eviction clearinghouse work. Does, does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah, I can, I can draft an email to Janine and kind of I'll include Seamus and commissioners, Mayor Lobby, administration. You can push that to the city council. And we can get, I think we can get something arranged where we can talk about trends and what's being seen, maybe, you know, what Janine might see as greater support from the state and increased funding to human services. And, sorry, reading the chat. And we can go from there on, on how to develop, how to, how to find out the numbers and understand the real impact locally. And from there, I would think we, we start talking about program ideas.
Could we use this work session time next Tuesday to have that conversation, Sarah?
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll include that in the email to Janine.
That'd be 1:00 next Tuesday?
That's correct.
And that'd be great because that morning also, the, the Food Access Coalition will be having their Zoom meeting that morning. I've already talked to Noah about this. I'll, I'll start talking it up, you know, with, I'm sorry, losing my mind. But, you know, with those organizations and, and try and get them, you know, they're willing to participate in, in this collaborative effort. I, I have no doubt they will because, you know, they've been doing it, they've been doing it well. This is another, this is a different level of what we've been working on.
Yeah, I would agree. Thanks for bringing that to us today, Greg. I really appreciate it.
No, you're welcome. You know, I know we've been cruising along and, and there's only so much we can do as a city and county, but, but this, this would appear to be eminently serious. Well, thank you for, thank you for your time. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Mayor.
Does anybody else have anything for us today? Commissioner Mudge, do you?
I don't. Thank you.
Sure. Crystal, Paul, Lori, Amber, anything else today before we adjourn?
Nothing from me.
All right.
Nothing from me either.
Awesome. All right, well, I think with that then, we're going to go ahead and adjourn today at 1:40. And then we'll pick this back up next Tuesday. Sarah will send that email invite out for us to reconvene this conversation next Tuesday after our public health update. And we'll see you guys all later this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.